You need to go with a sidewalk policy then? Street policies? If you're going to do one, you might as well do them all. And I agree with John on a lot of issues on his policy that he would like to see put in the policy. But there's some issues that I'd like to see in the policy too. So we'll talk back and forth on what I feel should be in the policy and what some of the other Aldermen have to say. Go ahead.
I agree with you. I think that if you're going to try and construct a cookie cutter kind of written policy, that it's going to be very, very difficult to put together because each neighborhood is unique.
Right.
And one of my thoughts that I'm just thinking out loud is, we get a petition, we send it to the Police Department and the Public Works Department and have them give the council a recommendation as to whether they think it's warranted. And you all decide on that. No length, no width, no minimum distance. Petition comes in, police takes a look at it and says, "We think it's warranted because of public safety issues." Public Works says, "We think it's warranted because of some other issues." And it goes to you, and you deal with each of them on a case-by-case basis. As Ms. Winger said a few minutes ago, we've only had two or three requests in the last five years. Maybe we don't need to reinvent the wheel.
Okay.
Maybe we just need to have our two resident experts give you a recommendation and have you decide on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Any other questions on the policy? Yes. Alderman Newzio Police, open next.
Well, you were just talking about ward by ward. I mean, we already, a lot of the blocks are already in R1, R2, R3. I'm not sure how it's going to work out when Land Vision comes back, if some of those disappear, but, I mean, that can be incorporated, so.
Mr. Coles.
I think we should leave it up to the individuals that send us the petitions and let it go at that. And all we're doing here is fighting against each other because Wally has his opinion, you have your opinion, Winger has her opinion, Roy has his opinion, I have my opinion. As far as it was like that before we started tonight, let's leave it the way it is. That's my opinion.
Alderman Short. Alderman Short.
Why does the public, what does the Public Works Department judge a light on? How would you say it's warranted or not? Do your recommendation to us?
Proximity to Parkway trees, proximity to underground utilities that may be in the area intersections.
Okay. That's, I think that sounds reasonable there. How about the Police Department?
Safety. That's what he's going to come up and say.
What was my answer?
Safety.
I would have to gauge it on safety. Kidding aside, we would basically search our records, see if there's anything to help support the request with regards to any formalized report, accidents, burglaries, injuries to people maybe walking down a sidewalk, maybe something along that line. So once again, check our records to see if there's something to help bolster that request. We are not saying no, what we are saying is trying to give the next position to be able to help further it along.
A recommendation.
Yes.
I'm Roy Wesley. Since my table failed, I see that we're heading down a policy here. So I'll make a motion here to do the 50% with City Council approval for a street light.
That's a motion. Is there a second on the floor?
Yes.
Fifty percent of the block.
But I'd like to add to that motion.
It's got to be approved.
Okay. There's a motion. You second the motion?
Yes.
There's a motion on the floor. There's a second. Questions on the motion.
The only thing I'd like to add is that the individual who was going to have the light in front of their house, they will say yes or no. We cannot put a light in front of somebody's house if they say no.
Does the motion agree with that change? Sure. There's a question on a motion.
Like, 95% of the time, we're going to be able to do that, and I support it. But there are circumstances where it's not a city block. It's going to join a park and a townhome subdivision, like Georgetown. And then what constitutes a block? I mean, we're going to have those. And then it really goes back to, I believe, looking at the need, having the Aldermen bring it forward. I don't know how we would determine what a block is in some instances. So this is going to be like 95% of the cases that we can do this policy. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. There's a second on roll call vote, please.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
No.
Alderman Police?
Can you read that back to me?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what. As I read it, it was 50% of the residents signing a petition, sent to the council for approval with the stipulation that whichever house the street light's going to be in front of has to give his approval.
Oh, is that the motion?
That was what I heard.
My vote is no then.
So it could, it could be 50 feet from the last light. Is that correct?
It could be.
The way we're stating it right now...
It could be, and then it's up to you.
Oh, no, we can't be 50 feet apart.
And then it's up to you to say, "No, it's too close." I mean, that's the way it is right now.
Wait, but if we write the policy like this, and again, I've got no problem putting in the light, but if we vote yes, and they come in with, now it's policy, it's written...
It's not an ordinance. It's a policy. It's your, ultimately, it's your call. That's what needs to happen to have it come to you guys.
Oh, so we're not, this isn't going to become...
This is not cut and dried. All this does is...
Oh, once we make policy, it goes to ordinance and we...
No, 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 no. What this says, what this says to me is, if I get a petition and 51% of the residents want a street light, and where the street light's going to go, the property owner doesn't object, then we'll take that petition to the City Council and you make the final call. And if you decide it's too close, if you decide it's too bright, if you decide for whatever reason it's like next to a townhome, you can decide not to. It's not, it's not mandating not tying your hands.
But we're not getting any footage right now, which I don't...
No, it's your call. It's, it's probably the, from the staff's point of view, it's the cleanest way to work it. Then I don't have to make any value judgments, or neither do these guys. I can just send it right to you and let you decide. That's easy.
Yes or no?
Okay, I'll go along with it.
Is that a yes?
That's a yes.
Joe?
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Make tough motions, yes.
Alderman Luton?
Yes.
That passes. Let's move on. The other item, other item is request install a street light on Essex Court. This has been to us, I wasn't at the last meeting, but this has been brought up to us before. There's a petition, there was a petition 50-50 for the project. So I guess, anyone want to make a motion?
I make a motion to install a street light on Essex Court.
Second.
Question on the motion? Alderman Newzio Police?
All right, the street light, do we already know where it's going to go? The resident that, on this, basically cul-de-sac, I...
After staff and Edmund Nelson reviewed the location for the proposed street light, we feel best that it would go inside the center of that bulb court at that location.
And is that possibly in front of the, per one person who said, "No, I don't want it"? Or is that, you know, do we know that?
Well, in essence, that's not in the front of someone's residence because it would be in the center of the island. So it would be not located directly in front of any one residence since it's doing the most good on that island, illuminating that entire road surface. I hope that answers your question.
We still don't know where this one resident is.
So it's not going in front of a house.
It's not in front of a house, it's in the island.
It's going right in an island.
It's equidistant from all those residences. Anybody could get man at it.
Alderman Roy Wesley? Let me amend that motion. What's the dollar amount to install this?
Between $7,000 to $7,500.
Install, okay, my motion will be install a street light on Essex Courts not exceed $7,500.
And the second one agrees.
Any other discussion on that motion? Alderman Luton?
Wally, a question. I just want to know, is there a standard light, or do these people have a choice, or does the city have a choice between any different styles of light?
We've not asked them that, but I would imagine that we would, I would assume that we would install a typical light pole that exists already. It'd be an aluminum pole at the same configuration that the other ones in the subdivision are. It would blend in, be the same kind that you've got in there already.
So it's your choice?
The city's choice.
Well, it's the city's choice. I mean, we would...
Plural, your choice is not you, Wally. Yours is the representative body that you...
The staff, the staff would make that call.
Yes, that you are, the head of.
I would imagine that Mr. Kramer would say, "Let's make it conform to the other ones." I mean, it doesn't make any sense to put a wood pole up there when everything else is aluminum.
I'm not asking you to do anything. I'm just asking what's your procedure in choosing?
I would, in, my procedure, what I would, I would defer to staff, and they make the big bucks. I would let John make that call.
Then put him, give him the mic.
Okay, Mr. Coles.
Wait, he's got to answer the question.
Okay, go ahead.
We will do our best to match the existing pole if availability is there for either one of the pole on Essex and Elizabeth Drive, which is the closest proximity to that bulb court. And if we can't match that, we'll go to the next pole on Elizabeth Drive.
Okay. I mean, at any point can the, before it goes up, can those citizens object to it?
No.
No.
Okay, that's good.
Mr. Coles? Is this in the budget? Do we have this in the budget, Christine?
I'm seeing a nod of no. So are you suggesting that we amend it, or wouldn't it even be ready until the next budget year anyways?
Won't be in the next budget.
From our point of view, we could have the light put up in the next six to eight weeks, depending on availability of the pole, whether or not from the supplier. We didn't look into the availability of the pole, but we know that time-wise, six to eight weeks would be sufficient to get the base installed and the necessary materials.
Okay, so we would do a budget amendment. I think that's fair.
Only if absolutely necessary, but I'm sure that, you know, for $7,000, there's enough in the Public Works Department to handle that. I wouldn't worry about it.
Okay.
Okay, so there was a motion, there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Thank, okay. Report and recommendations, sanitation, item number six, report and recommendations, sanitation sewer evaluation survey. Thank you, John. Ward two. As you know, this was brought to John's attention to look at this. The only drawback I have on this, and I have discussed this with Mr. John Kramer, since when do we go out, since when do we go out for proposals of a project? Is Jeff going to take over then? If Wally stepped out? My question is, when, since when do we go out for proposals for any projects in the city that have to do with engineers? My was told several times, and when I wanted to go out for proposal for any professional services or prices, I was told, "You can't do it because it falls under professional services." So we dropped it. My question is, how did this go out for proposal without this City Council approval? Without this City Council approval to go out? Are we going, so what I'm saying now is, then when it comes to the budget time, this chairman, we're going to not approve any projects at all, and we're going to send every professional services up for proposals then? So I just want to know who authorized it to go out for professional services prices? Mr. Kramer?
Thank you. Give a brief history on how this project started. Back a year and a half ago, I posed staff with the question, "How do we look at the Forest View area in general and try and minimize, reduce, explain some of these sanitary excursions that happen in that area during flooding events?" So my question to staff was, "How, how, how can we look at this?" At that point, there was some discussion about doing a citywide INI study. That citywide INI study, hey, you had before this committee two weeks ago during the CIP discussion. And after that point, staff still felt the need that we should produce some sort of a solution in the interim prior to that going into effect, knowing that that study would take a significant amount of time, both to get going, but also to get some results. So we brought a smaller SSES study, INI study, Influent Filtration Sanitary Sewer Evaluation Study before the city manager and said we would like to go ahead and look at a small section of the town. We had contacted one engineering firm already and gotten a preliminary price after deciding a scope of work. That preliminary price, we presented to the city engineer and the city manager. At that time, the city manager instructed staff to go out and elicit other prices based on our approved engineers list. Staff did that. Currently, the approved engineers list was last updated in, and I'm talking off the top of my head, I want to say May of 2008. And the engineers that were listed on there, there was not a lot of wastewater engineers, engineering firms that were located on that list. So in doing so, we contacted two firms, one of which was on the approved engineers list, and one of them was pending on the engineers approved list. The third one that we had gotten the original price from is not currently on that list of approved engineers. So after the completion of those proposals from those three firms, staff had selected and has continued to select Baxter and Woodman to do the INI study for the Forest View area based on the fact that they are on the 2008 approved engineers list. And staff feels that they would do an excellent job of doing that INI study for the city, for that small area town, and developing a game plan to eliminate some sanitary excursions, issues, problems, and/or develop a remediation effort for that area. And I can hand it off to Wally as well, if he has anything further.
Okay. Again, I'll go back to, did Strand Engineer get a bid at this too?
Strand and Associates, it's not on the city's approved engineers list, and we did not contact them.
And which they have done ours 10 years ago, so I don't know why they were not on the approved list.
Correct.
And ours 10 years ago, so what's going on with this list? It seems like this list has been, people's been taken off and, you know, Strand did ours for 10, 10 years ago. My, my concern here is, and I really have, believe me, I have no problem awarding this to Baxter and Woods. My concern is with this, this decision that was made, I don't think it's right that the staff could go ahead and go out for proposal with prices without our approval. First off, we have never gone out for professional services before. So the way I look at it now, anything that comes to the council now, my recommendation is when it comes to professional services, I'm going to vote that it goes out for proposals on every project then, because we have just opened up a can of worms here. Because we have never done it in the past, and now we did it. Okay? I have no problem awarding this to Baxter and Woods, but I just don't like the way this was done. So any other questions on that? Mr. Wally Duff, can you address that?
We've gone out for proposals on any number of projects. When we made a decision to hire the Lakota Group for the Thorndale Study, we went out for proposals. And you got several proposals, and you made the decision to hire the Lakota Consortium for that one.
But not for everything?
Well, no, not for the smaller projects. The council gave us direction on the smaller projects that were in the budget to go ahead and make a recommendation off of the approved engineering list. This was not in the budget, and it was of an amount that I thought was large enough that we needed to get more than one proposal and just hire someone and force-feed you one proposal to take it or leave it. The initial recommendation that came to me from staff was, "Let's go with this company that's on the list." And I said, "It's not in the budget, it's $30-some thousand. I think it behooves us to get some other proposals and give the council the ability to choose among those contractors." If this were a smaller project in the budget, we would have done the same thing we did on North Cedar, South Cedar, Windsor, Catalpa. Just choose one. But this was a size in terms of cost, and it wasn't in the budget, and I didn't feel comfortable just giving you, "Take it or leave it. Here's one consulting engineer, take it or leave it." We, we made the decision, a conscious decision, let's get more than one proposal and make sure that we're getting the best consulting engineer for this particular issue. I mean, it's no different than what we've done on the underpass, it's no different than what we've done on the sewage treatment plant, it's no different than what we did on the Thorndale Avenue corridor. In all of those cases, we went out and solicited proposals. No different.
Well, let's, let's back up here, and then what happened to Strand Engineer that did ours 10 years ago? How, how did they just drop off the list?
I don't know. That, that, that list was constructed in the spring of 2008, and I came on board in the fall of 2008, and I don't know what happened before I got here.
Yeah, I'm not too concerned about the list and what it was years ago. I've only been here about three years myself. But I know, when I first came on, I'm like, "Wait, why are we just picking a guy off the list? Why aren't we, you know, like we do the street projects?" And we had the attorney give the whole council this letter, actually even spoke to me in the back, explaining it to me, how, you know, "You don't just put this out and you get, you know, you get the cheapest price, and you got to go with the cheapest price because the cheapest price doesn't always mean the best engineer." Now, on the other hand, we have our approved list, and I understand that. All of a sudden, though, we're sending stuff out for proposal when I was told we shouldn't do that. You know, and we talked about this the other day, Wally, and I'll be honest with you, when I get the attorney in front of me, I'm going to drill him and have him explain this to me. Because I was always, I'm always, as a past business owner, let's put it out there, we know these guys are all reputable, who's giving me the best price? I was told that's not the way to do it. And now, here, it was done that way. I have no problem with Baxter and Woodman, I'll vote for it, no problem, but I was told one thing and something else happens.
I think we're, we're, we need to separate the issues. One is an issue of bids, the other is an issue of consulting engineering proposals. Okay? This is not a sidewalk contract where we award it to the low bidder. This is where we solicit proposals. The, the attorney advised us a number of months ago, you can, you don't have to go through requests for proposals for smaller projects that are in the budget. If you've got a pre-approved list, you can just negotiate with one contractor, with one consulting engineer. In this particular case, and this is, I'll take full responsibility for this, John recommended we go with a consulting engineer on the list. And I said to him, number one, it's more money than we normally do with that kind of thing. Number two, it's not in the budget. I don't want to have to force-feed a council, the council, one engineer, take it or leave it. I want you guys to do your due diligence and to get a couple, three proposals, and then decide on it. Frankly, I don't even know if Baxter Woodman is the lowest price on this.
I'm not even disputing that right.
I mean, the only reason we departed from the norm is that it wasn't in the budget, and it was at a cost higher than I was comfortable with just awarding.
So in other words, while we're doing the budget process this year, and we've got 10 engineering projects, I'll vote to put none of them in. I know we'll have the money there, and then we'll put them out for proposal.
Right.
We can do that?
Sure.
That doesn't sound right.
Every single project, if you want, if you don't want to select from a pre-approved list, you can send out RFPs, and we'll do each proposal the same way.
I mean, I don't want to make this complicated. Just, I was told one thing, and then something else happens.
The attorney told you, you can't hire consulting engineers on the basis of low bid alone. And we didn't send it out to, for three proposals just to get the best bid. I wanted to make sure that we were going to get the best qualified consulting engineer to do this.
Okay. All right. Christine Weaver?
Thank you. I, I don't have a problem on the way this was handled. I, I believe there, we called two to three engineering companies, gained assessment on how they could handle this and pricing, looked at the whole package, and picked the one that was most suitable in this case. And I really don't want to debate the going out for bid process tonight. This is a project that I believe needs to be done. It's about sanitary sewer discharge that is unclean, not hygienic. Let's get this project done. And that being said, we can, why don't we review the engineering list quarterly? It'd probably take five minutes to do a group review on Public Works quarterly, so we all understand who's on there, who's not. And if there's merit to take one off, then we would discuss that. Merit to add one, we would discuss it. Then we're all on the same page. But let's get this done tonight. Let's vote on it and look at it for the work that needs to be done, not necessarily the process tonight. Thank you.
Could I get a copy of his list?
I keep hearing this list of engineers and...
Sure, we'll have a copy tomorrow for you.
Are they on this list, Baxter and Woodman?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, I've been asking for this project for, for a while, and so have some of the residents in the affected area. So I agree with Alderman Winger, regardless of what anybody up here thinks about how this came together. And I think there are questions, and I think we may have to pursue those and, and make sure we all understand and are comfortable with that procedure at some point in the future. But in the meantime, the issue at hand is, is this project, and in my opinion, this, this is critical. It's a health issue. Certainly, as, as one of the Aldermen of that ward, I fully support this. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the awarded to Baxter and Woods, not to seed, $3,7,500. Do I have a second on that motion? Question on motion? Question? All in favor? Aye. Pose? Motion carries. Next item. Report and recommendation pavement request number three to Lamp Concrete for an amount of $31,711.12. That is my motion. I have one question. Is there a punch list done anywhere?
Punch list, it's not done. The weather turned bad before they could get to it. They should get it done in the... They should get it done in the...